Color guard, please honor your colors. Please join us in saying the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Color guard, return to post.
Dr. Yurkovich.
Good evening, and thank you for attending tonight's Olathe Public Schools Board of Education meeting. Before we begin, we feel as important that we review the importance of conducting a productive and orderly meeting. This meeting is designated for the board to work with the superintendent and staff to conduct the work as outlined in the agenda. Please understand that patrons attending the meeting do so solely in an observatory role. Out of respect for everyone in attendance, we requested audience members not speak, yell, or give applause during the meeting outside of recognitions. This ensures the board, staff, and other attendees are able to listen and understand the business conducted. Anyone disrupting the meeting in any capacity will be asked to leave and may lose the opportunity to attend future meetings. Thank you again for attending, and we'll now proceed with the agenda.
Thank you, sir. Moving on to Agenda Item 1.03. Barb, I think the floor is yours?
Not really, sir. So Brad?
Yes, ma'am.
Claire, Will, and Stacy, come down to the front, please. Okay. Do you solemnly swear you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Kansas, and faithfully discharge the duties of the member of the Board of Education, Unified School District Number 233, Johnson County, Kansas, so help you God?
I do.
Congratulations.
Oh my gosh, everybody.
You ready? One, two, three. One more, one, two, three. One, two, three. Perfect.
All right, moving on to Agenda Item 2.01. Seek a motion to adopt the agenda.
Move to adopt the agenda as presented.
Second?
We have a motion by Mrs. Steele and a second by Dr. Yurkovich.
Mr. Boyd?
Yes.
Mr. Babbitt?
Yes.
Dr. Yurkovich?
Yes.
Mrs. Steele?
Yes.
Mrs. Reagan?
Yes.
Thank you.
Motion carries 5-0. Moving on to 3.01, recognition award. Becky, welcome back.
Thank you. I'm happy to be here and happy to have some celebrations tonight. So to kick us off tonight, we are recognizing Subaru of Olathe as one of our amazing district partners. So I'd like to invite Kevin Kite, Subaru of Olathe General Manager, Mary Kate Hale, Recruiting Coordinator for Baxter Auto, Rolling Ridge Principal Danielle Haldeman, OATC Administrator Amy Stoles, and Director of Community Development Heather Schoonover up to the front. For many years Subaru of Olathe has supported the Olathe District through outreach to students at all levels as well as staff. A valuable partnership piece is the donation of a Subaru Impreza to the Olathe Advanced Technical Center Auto Tech and Auto Collision Programs. The car has been key to assist instruction and relevant training so students can learn about electronic systems and new vehicles and how to fix them. Aligning with our goal to provide students with real-world experiences, Olathe's local Subaru dealership has hosted student interns and job shadow opportunities, paid for field trips to automotive locations, and had staff participate with students in the OATC Interview Skills Day. Subaru sponsored a Remote Control Car Club, hosted the OATC Car Show, sponsored staff and students to receive online technician training modules, and assisted with the program's PBIS kickoff. An exciting piece is that they hosted a Women in Automotive Industry Conference as well. Subaru of Olathe has been a donation site for school supplies and new backpacks for Olathe students that are unable to afford necessary academic resources. The dealership also donated $500 to the Olathe Public Schools Foundation John Ernst Strong Fund. Elementary staff and students from Rolling Ridge Elementary benefited from the Subaru Share the Love Event. The $12,500 donation to the school allowed each classroom teacher to have $500 for classroom supplies and supports needed. Students and families were supported through Subaru's contributions at the Taste of Rolling Ridge Cultural Event in November and the recent 34th Annual Breakfast with Santa. Last year, the dealership built 24 youth bikes so students had the joy of a new bike on Christmas morning. All 10 Title I Elementary Schools will receive new books for students this year from the generosity of Subaru. We applaud both the leadership and staff of Subaru of Olathe as they consistently support the community and their local school district. Thank you. At this time, I'd like to ask the Olathe East Boys Soccer Team up to the front along with their head coach Keely O'Grady, Principal Carrie Lane, and District Athletic Director Matt Johnson. I know they're here. I saw them earlier. There they are. Well, while they make their way up, I'll tell you a little bit about them. On November 4th, the Olathe East High School Boys Soccer Team was crowned as the Class 6A State Champions after defeating Shawnee Mission West High School 1-0 in Topeka. Junior defender Duncan Black scored what turned out to be the game-winning goal in the first half of the game. Holding on to a 1-0 lead with seven minutes of play left in the game, East was whistled for a penalty inside the box, setting up a penalty kick for Shawnee Mission West. In the most critical moment of the game, senior goalkeeper Gabe Liston stepped up to make the state title-clinching save. Olathe East now has five state titles in the history of the boys' soccer program, but it was the first for head coach Keely O'Grady, who was recently named the 6A Coach of the Year by the Kansas High School Soccer Coaches Association. Coach O'Grady was proud to see his team battle their way to a state title. Join me in congratulating this special group of young men and their coaching staff. Congratulations. What? Oh, parents, yes, come.
Guys, that's above our pay grade.
The gentleman at the end makes that decision.
Don't believe him.
Listen, Brent, you can't blame them for trying, right? Okay. For this next recognition, I would like to invite Bob Courtney up to the front. We are honoring Bob tonight for his extensive, and I mean extensive, work authoring on the banks of Mill Creek where Olathe Public Education began, a comprehensive compilation of the Olathe School District's history beginning around 1858 through 2022. The book contains information from the earliest days of the district up to and including consolidation. In fact, later tonight, our board members will be receiving their very own autographed copy of Bob's book. In 1966, Bob completed his student teaching for graduation from Kansas State University in the field of elementary physical education. He taught elementary physical education in the Shawnee Mission School District before coming to Olathe where he was an itinerant librarian at Westview and Central Elementary Schools. He then opened two media centers from scratch with the opening of the new Tomahawk Elementary and Briarwood Elementary. And finally, Bob ended his career with the district as the district's Energy Manager where he served from the early 90s until he retired in 2010. Since then, Bob has remained heavily connected and involved in the Olathe community, serving on the local Elementary Social Studies and Science, Health, and Physical Education Curriculum Revision Committees, playing an instrumental role in Olathe's 150th Celebration, and remaining very involved with the Olathe Historical Society, among many, many other roles. Bob has put in countless hours of research and work to capture the history of Olathe, but he's not done, as he's currently in the process of writing a second book. I would be remiss, though, if I did not also take this opportunity to acknowledge Erica Darrington, our Graphic Communications Manager, for her instrumental role in helping bring this book to life. Erica, stand up. Erica also dedicated countless hours of her individual time to help design the layout of this book and collaborate with Bob to make his vision a reality. This kind of passion and collaboration is what makes Olathe so special and our history so special. Please join me in applauding Bob and Erica for their amazing work. Oh, yes, we'll do the books later, Bob, and we'll have you come up for a picture. And then, I'm so glad you mentioned Bob has included some literature out front for anyone who is interested in ordering their own copy of a book. So be sure to grab that information on your way out. All right, and now Superintendent Brent Jaeger is going to come and tell us about another special recognition that we have tonight.
I get to do this one time every year, so I'm really excited to be doing this tonight. Tonight, I'd like to honor, actually, I'm going to rewrite this a little bit as I stand here. Tonight, I would like to honor the six people who dedicate countless hours to our district, our Board of Education. January is Board of Education Appreciation Month. On behalf of myself, our staff, our students, our families, and our community, thank you for your commitment to moving our district forward together into the vision of Olathe Public Schools, preparing all students for their future. You certainly don't have the easiest job, but even through adversity, you share a common goal: holding Olathe Public Schools to the highest standards and always keeping our students first and foremost. Your support is essential to the excellence we continue to see in our school district. I'd like to thank our board members who have already served: President Brad Boyd, Vice President Julie Steele, Robert Kuhn, and Stacy Yurkovich. I'd also like to welcome our two newest board members, Claire Reagan and Will Babbitt. And I want to thank you all for the sacrifices you're making for the betterment of our district. I know that you will serve us well. We have a gift for each of you as a small token of our appreciation: Mr. Courtney's book, which you already heard about, and a piece of artwork by one of our talented students. We are so fortunate to have the artist Kira Williamson, former Frontier Trail, with us here tonight. Kira, can you please stand and wave to be recognized? If you all want to walk down, Dr. McMullen has the gifts he'll hand you, and we'll take a couple pictures together tonight. Yeah, and then Bob and Kira, if you will join the board, we'd love to get you in a couple pictures as well.
All right, moving on to our presentations for this evening. We have two presentations. The first one is going to be from the principal at Indian Creek Middle School, Brian Barackman. So welcome up to the podium. What did I say?
Indian Creek.
Indian Trail, sorry.
There it is. Thank you. Hey, can we hear it one more time for that Indian Trail Girl Scout troupe? Good evening, and thank you so much for having us tonight. I am just absolutely thrilled to be sharing with you about the amazing things that are going on at Indian Trail Middle School. So I brought the experts up here, which is always the best part of the school spotlight, for them to share what it's really like for them at Indian Trail. But before we get into all the amazing things we got going on, the award-winning teachers, award-winning students, I wanted to start just quickly by introducing myself as well as giving a couple thanks really quickly before we get started. So my name is Brian Barackman. I am principal at Indian Trail Middle School. It's a school that is very close to my heart, and I say it's my school not because I'm principal, but because it's my alma mater. So here, I wanted to share a couple pictures of me from my time at Indian Trail, from the yearbooks, and from the hot new line of PE clothing that came out. So this is why this school is so special to me, and it's such a blessing to be able to give back to the community that gave me so much when I was growing up. So I'm just thrilled and blessed to be here. So thank you for having us. I would be remiss if I didn't give a couple thank yous before we hear from the stars of the show tonight. And I actually want to start with this amazing Indian Trail Cougar family right here, our staff of teachers and paraprofessionals who day in and day out bring everything they have for our students and create such an amazing middle school experience for them. I would also like to thank our lead custodial, all our custodial staff, but especially our CIRA award-winning lead custodian Luis Correo, who gives his heart and soul not only to his family, but also to his school, and he's just about the nicest guy you'll ever speak to in your life. I would also like to thank quickly our front office staff. The educators in this room know that nobody knows more about what's going on in the school than that group of people right there. Them, including all of our front office staff, our counseling department, and everyone, just support us and the students day in and day out so incredibly well. And also, a major thank you to the most supportive group of community partners. I honestly would say that it would take me about an hour presentation to talk to you about all the support that they give us and our students' families, and it would truly move you, what they do for our school, our students, and their families. And we're truly thankful for all the support that they give us and the support that they help us give to our school community. So thank you to all of our community partners. I'm going to start this evening by talking about the thing that makes Indian Trail the most unique, and that is our house system. So in quick summary, those of you who are familiar with Harry Potter, think Harry Potter. On the first day of sixth grade, every student gets sorted into one of four houses, and they stay in one of these houses all three years through middle school. And what's special about this is not only is it a way that the students can connect to the school and to other students in the building and teachers in the building, but also clearly it's a ton of fun, if you see what we got going on there, and is also the center of our PBIS system. So students earn points for things like acts of kindness, things like academic excellence in the classroom. Not only do they earn house points for themselves, but it also goes to their house total, and we find who's the house leader each week, and at the end of the year, who wins the house cup, very similar to like you see in Harry Potter. So I guess that makes me Dumbledore. And I love Indian Trail so much, I plan to be here until my beard looks like Dumbledore. That's enough for me, though. So our wonderful student leaders here are going to talk to us. First, we have Jaclyn, who's going to tell us about why the house system is so important for Indian Trail. Jaclyn.
Thank you. The house system brings so much joy to Indian Trail every day. Every day, I get to check the leaderboard in the hallway and talk some friendly smack on my friends from other houses. Our saying is, "Four houses, one family." But I definitely still want my house to win. Every week, the leading house gets their flag flown in front of the school. I like coming in and seeing my flag flown for all to see. We also each have our special cheers and chants that make our pep assemblies fun and different from other schools. Probably the best part, though, are the after-school activities. A couple times a year, each house gets to have fun just for their, just have fun after-school events just for their house. These are so much fun and are great times to meet new students and teachers you've never had before. It's really a lot of fun for us. Thank you.
Awesome, Jaclyn. Thank you. We next have Oscar, who's going to tell us about what the house system means to him and the individual students in our school.
The house system has made me feel more connected to a school than I have ever been. I feel like I have a group of people that I belong to and a collective goal to work toward. Thanks to all of our activities we do by house instead of by grade level, I've been able to meet so many sixth graders, seventh graders, and teachers that I normally would never have met without without doing these house celebrations. I made some new friends and been able to help out some sixth graders on our house event days and after-school house celebrations. Also, I want my house to win the house cup, so I feel more motivated to do good deeds and get house points. We can get house wins by being kind to each other, showing extra effort in the classroom, and showing school spirit. I feel like I've been a better student all around thanks to our houses.
Awesome. Thank you, Oscar. And like Oscar told you, everything we do in the school is organized around the house system, and that includes our eighth-grade leadership group. So Juan is here to tell us a little bit about our eighth-grade leadership group. We call them house ambassadors, and what makes that special and different from other schools.
Our eighth, Indian Trail's eighth-grade leadership group is called House Ambassadors. We use our house system to take our eighth-grade leadership program to the next level. Each of us work with a small group of sixth graders that are also in our same house. This makes a huge difference because this means that we don't just connect with their sixth graders during house ambassador activities with them, but we also get extra time with them during our school-wide house days, after-school activities, pep assemblies, and more. Not only do we teach our sixth-grade groups about Indian Trail and being in middle school, but we also teach them about our house's traditions, crests, symbolism, animals, cheers, chants, cheers, chants, and hand signals. It really helps incoming sixth graders feel excited about middle school.
Awesome. Thank you, Juan. Yes, as you see in this picture, we roll out the red carpet for them, and we teach them all those wonderful things day one so they can feel part of their new house from the get-go. And it just truly, every school, I believe, has a really fun first day for their sixth graders. But for me, I've never had one that's so special because this adds such a layer of depth and fun and excitement, and I get to meet all the new students who are in my house, and it's just really, really special for us. So there's one other program that is not completely unique to Indian Trail, but we are one of very few schools that have it, and that is an AIM program. AIM stands for Achievement Through Individual Motivation, and it is, I'm going to go ahead and say, it is my favorite class that is offered at the middle school level. It is truly special. And Iris is here to tell us a little bit more about what AIM is and why it's special to her.
AIM is more than just a class. Thanks to our teacher, Ms. Bakerstaff, it's a community for support for one another. In this class, we learn things like how to be successful in middle school, high school, and college, study skills and habits, how to be a good candidate in an interview, but most importantly, skills like kindness, confidence, making a difference in our community, and having the grit, perseverance, and determination to make it through all ups and downs in our life. AIM and Ms. Bakerstaff have helped me become a better person and also make a plan for how I want to live a successful life after high school.
Thank you, Iris. The four students that you just heard from are not only house leaders, but they are also part of our house ambassador program and all four are part of our AIM program, and I am so proud of them. Could we just give them a quick round? Not only for doing such a great job tonight, but for everything you bring day in and day out to Indian Trail, your kindness and leadership. I think if you were to check the house points leaderboard, they would be up there toward the top, all four of them. So we really appreciate all that you bring to the table every single day. Speaking of bringing things to the table, we actually have something to give you all. So give us one second to pass this out to you, and we'll explain what it is. So what you have in front of you represents a couple different things. First of all, this is a form that you can actually fill out to give some Indian First of all, this is a form that you can actually fill out to give some Indian Trail students house points. And this is real, so you can fill this out and give it back to me and I will submit house points for those students. It also represents an invitation. We would like, please use this, whoever got one, and I have some extras if anybody else wants more, as an invitation into Indian Trail to come see all these amazing things that we've talked about tonight yourselves and also to become part of that Four Houses, One Family Cougar family by getting involved in our house system, by giving some students some house points. You can even select a house if you like and we'll get you a house shirt and a few bonus tips for you. If you would like to come on a Thursday, we may have our special Cougar Coffee, Coffee Shop open. Our wonderful CBR group runs this most Thursdays, so you can come in, get a delicious hot beverage and a world-famous cookie. I'm telling you, try these cookies. And also every day, if you want, you can come, start your day with some cuddles from our therapy dog, our school therapy dog, Cooper. So that's my invitation to you. Please use this to come to Indian Trail, cuddle up on Cooper, get a nice delicious beverage and join us for our Four Houses, One Family experience and become part of the Cougar family. Thank you so much for your time tonight. We appreciate you.
Do you have any questions? You're off the hook.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to our second presentation, we'd like to welcome Dr. Sig and her team to the podium.
Good evening. We really need to do work on the agenda so that the school spotlight is not ahead of us because that's a hard act to follow, but we will do our best. Thank you so much for giving us some time this evening to share with you some of the work that our team has been doing in human resources, but even more so, the work that we've been doing in partnership with our teacher induction and university partnerships crew. So we have some exciting information to share in terms of the work that we're doing in these areas. But before I dive into that, I wanted to start first with kind of the basis for this work, which of course is our strategic plan. And as outlined in our strategic plan, there is an entire goal surrounding human resources. But tonight, we're going to focus in on two of the priority outcomes that you see here. So that's going to be in reference to recruitment, selection and development, along with compensation and benefit alignment. So anytime we start talking about a goal or an outcome, we want to know where we're beginning from. And so I'm sharing some data and stats here that was compiled by Dr. Brett Church in reference to some of the challenges that we'll be facing and are currently facing when it comes to recruitment and retention. So I won't read all of these, but a couple that stand out are that first one. When we talk about the number of teachers that are planning to leave, the classroom is at 55%. And then that third one as well, that we are now crossing a threshold where more than half of parents are discouraging their kids from becoming educators, which is a little bit of a, you know, pierced to the heart. But we also know that this is important information for us to have as we look to recruiting and keeping the very best in our district. I want to clarify that what we're going to talk about tonight and what I think is one of the greatest highlights of the work that these teams have done is that this is work that's connected to recruitment and retention of our educators, but also of all of our staff. We know that our teachers in the classroom are critical and vital, but we also know all of our support staff are also important to making sure that job can get done. And we have not been immune from the labor and workforce shortages that we're seeing in so many other professions as well. So we'll be focusing on all of those areas this evening. So I'm not using an acronym, but I did feel like we needed a visual, so this may not be a visual that resonates with you. So if it isn't, you can ignore. This is LaShelle's visual. When I think about recruiting and retaining an outstanding staff, I think of it as kind of, you know, cultivating and growing, whether that's a plant or a tree or a garden. And so when we think about this work, we're talking about planting seeds, some of which may not sprout a plant for four, five, six, seven, eight years even. But we have to start thinking that far out, knowing some of the challenges that we're facing in terms of the number of students we have going into education. And then I think of cultivating staff and making sure that there are opportunities for professional growth, that those new educators have the supports that they need. We all know the statistics around teachers and the high percentage that leave within their first five years. And so every district is mandated to provide supports for those groups of individuals. But I have to just say, here in Olathe, we do an exemplary job with this and go above and beyond in supporting those new educators. And we're going to share some of that this evening as well. Along with that, we also have great pathways and opportunities for staff to grow and even to pursue other areas and other professions within education. So we're going to talk a little bit about that. And then the last one is the kind of deepening those roots. And so making sure that those great educators and staff members that we have stay here in Olathe and really put down those roots. And so when we think of that work, we're thinking of our benefits and compensation work. So this is certainly not a set of initiatives that can be accomplished alone. And so I'm really blessed to work with the very best. And so have with me here this evening, members of our human resources team. We have Dr. Kathy Donovan, who's our director of elementary HR. Mr. Justin Howe is our director of secondary. And then Ms. Michelle Morris, who is our director over our classified staff. And Mr. Eric Hanson, who's our director of benefits and HR operations. Along with them, we are fortunate to get to work with our friends and colleagues over in teacher induction and university partnerships. And that's the director, Dr. Ann Addison, along with Ms. Amy Hillman, who's our teacher and recruitment liaison. You're not going to forget Amy, I can promise. So we're going to dive in first and talk a little bit about some of those long range and then also those immediate initiatives we have going on within our departments to plant those seeds in order to then grow those great educators and staff members. So you can see here kind of the long range and then a little shorter term and then the immediate work that we're focusing in on. And I'm going to invite up here, Dr. Donovan, to share with you some information in reference to our Future Educators 21st Century Academy to kick us off.
One of the things we've found as we've tried to tackle this teacher shortage over the years is that one of the best strategies is to grow your own. So we've started with, we started, of course, with our high school students. And then Amy's going to share, she's doing phenomenal work with even, she's going to start working even with elementary students to kind of promote education. Amy, as you listen to her, I can't think of a better person that can put a positive spin on education. So we're working hard to work with our own students to promote education and grow them to come back and teach. I'm sure you're familiar with our 21st Century Future Educators Academy. And I'd be remiss if I didn't take time to acknowledge the two teachers, Shelley Staples and Kelly Warren. They have done an exceptional job in preparing those students. The program they've developed, the experiences that they provide those students, I'd say are equivalent to sophomore, junior year experience in college. They come out, they have a good understanding of what education, teaching involves and they're ready to go. So what I want to do, I kind of want to give you a quick overview of how that process works. Human resources, we begin engaging those students, getting involved with them as soon as we can. We've connected with those students early on. We go out, we do presentations, we sit on panels. Even our recruiters go out and help them walk through, talk to them about creating a resume, interviewing, getting them prepared. So we do a lot of that in the fall and then again in the spring. And then we focus on the seniors of each year. This program, the Hire Our Own program started, it was a dream, a vision, but we finally were able to get it going the year of 2020. So our first class were the seniors of 2021. So when we were talking through this, we wanted to continue that real-world experience for them. We have them apply. So about this time this year, we'll put an application, we'll put a posting up. Those students have to apply for jobs. They have to visit with teachers to get references. So they have to submit references, transcripts, everything a teacher would do except, of course, a teaching license. They don't have that yet. So we schedule a time. We have them come over here to interview. We talk about dress, you know, questions they should ask. We invite in our building administrators, who then put them through an interview. And then we look at the interviews and then we actually go out. One of the pictures you'll see, we go out to East every spring and invite those students in and we offer contracts to them. That is worth it. I mean, there'll be tears, there'll be excitement. Some of them are getting on the phone, texting their parents to let them know. There's no, it's just so exciting. And then we go out again in May, when they have their culminating activity and we're there with the students and the parents and again, celebrate with them. And then that's not the end because we track them throughout their college. Shelley and Kelly do a great job of having each group come back. And they have, like, I think this December, they had a cookie exchange when they were all back from college and they invite us to go attend and connect with them. So I just kind of want to give you a few updates on the numbers. Don't panic when you see that our return on investment is actually starting next school year. We are so excited. You'll see one, but that's only because she finished in three years. So that first group, that first class, we actually have 16. So we'll have one that's actually student teaching with us this spring. Ann has worked hard to get her placed. So we're excited to have her join us for the 24-25 school year. The next year, you'll see 15 more joining us and then nine and then 15. And then we'll begin starting on a new group this spring. Any questions on just our Hire Our Own program? Now Amy's going to share a little bit of exciting work that she's doing with other high school students as well as middle school and elementary.
That Dr. D, I tell you, she knows how to land information, y'all. I'm Amy Hillman. I'm our district's 233 recruiting liaison, friends. Happy New Year, y'all. 2024 in the house. Can you believe this? Welcome 2024. I cannot start doing this until I say thank you. I begin with graciousness on purpose because where you sit right here, mm. I'm telling you, thank you for working with our students. Thank you for working alongside of us as the colleagues, of the teachers, the educators. And thank you for working for our community. Okay, as a mama and as an educator, you don't get any better than this, friends. So let me jump into what the work is. Okay, so here's the deal. FEC, Future Educator Club is part of a bigger picture. You ready for this? So imagine this, now y'all got a bag of goodies. Do you remember that? When you're sitting in the seat and it said Teach Olathe? Okay, cool. Inside of there are all the goodies that make up what we call Teach Olathe. Imagine Teach Olathe is the label where all of these programs and initiatives fall underneath. First of all, the FEA, that's right, East in the House, Future Educator Academy is part of that. Then we have another component. See, what we realize is that some juniors and seniors in high school, well, they wanted to become educators too. They missed the boat when it came to the academy, but we had to create different ways and different pathways for them to get to the party called education. So FEC is our way in all five of our high schools. There is an FEC, a Future Educator Club. Now this high school connection underneath Olathe, that Teach Olathe, then you go next door because we have also a middle school component called Fay Crew. We'll talk about Fay Crew in just a moment. And then we also have the babies. That's right. See, this year, we're starting something called the Golden Apples. And those are when the fifth graders, they lean back and they help out those kindergarten, first grade classes. But then we also, underneath that Teach Olathe umbrella, we have our passport events, our paras, our aides, our support staff and subs. Well, we create part of their pipeline with them and for them. So let's start off with FEC, the Future Educator Club. I am not going to read off of this. I want to kind of just peel back the layers if you don't mind. All five high schools have an active, right now, club FEC. How do we get the students to be involved in the FEC? Well, we hand out recommendation cards. We hand them out to faculty, to staff, to community members, because I want to know who has that sparkle in your class. We ask the students to sign up because some kids just know they want to be educators. And then we also have this cool tool that we have through the counseling system called Zello. And if they have a top three choice in Zello in the high school years that has something to do with service of education, well, they're going to get a little email, a little prompt from the Hillman lady. And I'm going to go ahead and invite them into one of our FECs, those clubs. Now the beautiful part is that when it comes to them choosing to be part of this club, imagine this, there's three layers. The first layer, they're going to get information from me about workshops, maybe scholarship information. Maybe some colleges want to push information. I'm going to make sure they stay in the know, but they don't have to show up to club meetings. Some kids just don't have the time. So that's level one. Level two, oh, now we're talking club time, friends. We're talking about once or twice a month during their flex time, their AI time, whatever the high school is saying. I'm telling you this, they meet and they connect and they talk about how they're going to serve their community. You see, our high schools are reaching out and we're doing internships now. Our high schools are reaching out and doing observations at middle and elementary schools. Our high school kids are getting their hands dirty and they're walking the walk of educators as part of these FECs. Some of the opportunities that we do offer through what we do, Ann and I do in our offices here, we offer workshops, field trips, volunteer hours, and of course, those observations and internships. We also offer Saturday Scholars, which is about to kick off next Saturday. This is at Santa Fe Trail Middle School and this is where our mentorships come to play. When our young kids, whether they're eighth grade, Fay Crew, FEC or even college, if they want a connection and a way to mentor our students at Santa Fe Trail, they become a teacher leader. This is the 17th year that we've done Saturday Scholars at SFT and Washington. And it's a powerful program. I invite you to come visit and see what we do on those Saturday mornings. Another thing is we have KFTA, Kansas Future Teacher Academy. Remember those layers? First layer, basic. Second layer, they're in the club. Third layer, well, see, those are our competitive Ed Rising kids. They're ready to rise up. See, now FEA and FEC, I know acronyms, right? They come together. We had over 35 kids that competed this year at Ed Rising. Now here's the beautiful part. In our district, we have 10 that are going to state. That's what I'm talking about. I'm talking about competitive level three future educators. Now this is why I brought it up for the KFTA, Kansas Future Teacher Academy. May not sound new. This is over at Emporia State University in the summertime. Well, this goes way back into the late 70s, early 80s and some of you might even went to it. Did you go to, uh-huh, I see you, okay, Dr. Waters. She's like, I trained me up. Here's what we do. Now we have two weeks that we offer, beginning of the summer, end of the summer. Just in the past two years, my friends, 23 of our FEA and FEC students have attended that academy. And when I tell you we bring the best of the best, and by the way, I get to co-direct that thing. That's right. I get to co-direct it with this cat named Todd Roberts. And we create five days at a time of amazing connections where our students don't have a choice, but really dream of becoming the educator we know they will be in Kansas. And me, I know they'll be in Olathe. Now we have a university summit event that we host in springtime. That's when we bring the universities to the IRC. And then we have the FEA and the FEC in the levels one, two and three. We invite them in to talk about what it looks like at the university level. It's never too early to figure out what you're going to do to get those four years of education to become a certified educator here in Kansas and especially here in Olathe. These numbers on the right side about enrollment, this is what I can tell you. The KFTA students, those 23 that went to the intro and those six students that went to the advanced, they didn't have to come out of pocket one dime. Why? Because ONEA and university partnerships covered all of their fees. That's what equity looks like. When you know, when we know they have the spirit to become the educator which we wish for them to be, oh, we covered those costs. So thank you to those two teams. The numbers have doubled each year. The numbers have doubled each year since I joined this work three years ago. And ooh, I'm telling you, we're not done yet. Fay Crew, ooh, this is my heart, because those of you that know me, I'm a middle school science teacher. And so when it comes to middle school, I'm going to throw down. Fay Crew is our middle school connection. All of our middle schools has a Fay Crew and they have active members, but we get busy second semester. Now how did I find these students? Now how did I find these students? Well, we had a career fair, so we did some recruitment. Recommendation cards, we have those for middle school, they're in your bags. AIM classes, remember those rock stars? By the way, three of those four rock stars up here. Mm-hmm. Fay Crew members, hello, you know what I mean. Uh-huh, I bet you can choose which ones. Mm-hmm. And then another way that I get to step into the pathways is I get to go to career classes. I'm invited through the CTE pathways, I get to jump in and I get to talk about my absolute career. I'm an educator, a career educator. And then they tend to sign up for Fay Crew, I don't know why. Three things are going to happen for all of these Fay Crew kids this semester. First of all, we're going to take a visit to JCCC. We got to walk the walk and talk the talk to get our kids ready for university level. So we do that with community college in our backyard. Second of all, all of those schools will have a shadow day where those Fay Crew students get to dress the part, walk the part, and they're going to shadow an educator in that building. Third of all, Fay Crew Summit, ooh, Dr. Addison, I love this part, you know I do. We take all of the Fay Crew kids and we invite them in, we go pick them up, we invite them in this year to the IRC because we have outgrown ourselves. We train them up in the morning. We have a cute little lunch and then we launch them into the elementary classrooms. That's right, we launch them into elementary schools. Last year, Washington Central and Ridgeview. We're going to have to add three more elementaries, so principals, I'm talking to you. And finally, why do we do this work? Because we need to bridge. We need to bridge our students from the middle school to understand that the high school has opportunity for them. If it's a great fit and we cross our fingers, we go FEA. If it doesn't fit perfectly, well, then we go FEC. We're going to guide them there. Our numbers are looking amazing, y'all, look at that. 167 eighth graders signed up for the club last year. Look at this year, 308. 97 remained active all year last year and so far, 127, y'all. And I'm here to tell you that number will grow in the next few weeks. I have to show you about the Golden Apples. This will be my final, picture this. There are fifth graders in fifth grade classrooms right now that have that spark, that have that energy, that are the Amy Hillmans and Dr. Addisons and the Kelly Tines of the world, maybe even a Bren Jaeger. Blessings, as the child said earlier, amen. Here's what I know, children start believing as early as third grade that this is the avenue for them. It is time for us to catch up with the children. We're going to create avenues, pipelines, and scenarios so they can become the teacher and the leader. All right, I'll tell you about Passport in a moment, I'm going to pass it on to my dear friend.
Give a little emotional break now. I do have to say, the work that Amy is talking about, to me, is some of the most exciting stuff that we have been doing in years. We sat in a meeting, sorry, the other day, listening to some folks talk about how urgent it is for us to find teachers. And I do believe that is so true, but the whole time I'm sitting there listening to that, I'm thinking, we're doing it here, we are doing it in Olethwaite. So once we get these folks into university and they hit year four, they are ready to student teach. And we have a great student teaching program here in the district. We have partnerships with many universities in the area. I think right now we've got 24 different universities, 25 represented in our student teaching population right now. So we really do get from in-state, out-of-state, I think five states is what we have at this point. I think one of the things that really helps us as a district to get these student teachers is, first of all, the partnerships that we have cultivated over the years. Second of all, the fact that we have dedicated staff and that we have a rigorous process for placement of our student teachers, that we're not just randomly connecting students with teachers, but we really do think hard about what that student is wanting and needing and what the teachers have to offer. So we do have that. The other piece that we're doing right now that I think is really encouraging for some of our paraeducators is that for our staff that are going into education as paraeducators, we are able to stipend them while they are student teaching and allow them to maintain their benefits. This is huge for them. They can get themselves up to student teaching, but then to have to step down from their para position, it becomes really difficult. Many of them are doing it for those benefits and so we feel like this has been a great thing to offer them. The state has also loosened their guidelines for subbing. And we know that with subs, oftentimes we have student teachers who are in with a cooperating teacher and we think, gosh, if only we could pull that student teacher to do some work. We now are able to do that if they hold a Kansas State Emergency Sub License and if they've applied to be a sub in the Olethwaite School District. We can't count those days as their student teaching, but they can be compensated for subbing some of those days during their student teaching time. We also offer some great events for them and I'll talk just a little bit about that here, is our Student Teacher Boot Camp, which we actually have coming up February 26th, I think. Would love to have any of you stop by to see that. It's a recruitment event for us, but it also equips our student teachers with all of those skills that they're going to need to be ready to interview and get ready for their first teaching position. And this is a picture of, we have a principal panel each year, this is a picture of our boot camp from this past year. Justin? Okay, we're going to talk just a little bit about the certified recruitment.
Good evening, my name is Justin Howden, Director of Secondary Schools for the Olethwaite School District. And this is a great slide because it talks a little bit about our efforts both fall and spring and it really never stops. We do summer work as well, but really the big focus is fall and spring. And you'll see right at the top, we do recruiting trips, which is a lot of fun. So fun, sorry, I took Amy on a recruiting trip and we got every resume that went by our booth. So it was fantastic.
Everyone.
And that was fantastic. But as you can see, we go, we don't stop with Kansas, we go through our whole Midwest area and we really focus on what's achievable in our market and we go get it. And we look for their best and brightest. We also get two HBCUs currently, Harris Stowe and St. Louis, and Langston, Oklahoma with Lincoln, and Jefferson City coming very soon, which is very exciting for us. One of the things that we started just a few years ago that we're very proud of is our Olethwaite Fall and Spring Interview Nights. And you'll see 55 candidates from this last fall and in the spring, this last spring we had 63. Now let me put some scope onto that number. When we go to Emporia State, which is one of our larger recruiting events at colleges, we'll take about five recruitment officers with us. And we range that, we have HR folks, we have principals, we have staff members from all walks of life to help talk and spread the good things about Olethwaite. But we usually take about five and we can fill our whole schedule up with about six each, so really about 30. And that's a really good event. And we brought in 55 this last fall, so almost double that, and then 63 in the spring. So 118 through just Olethwaite in one year is amazing. And we have amazing candidates walk through the metro for that, so very proud of those things. We've also started some college lecture events, which has been very exciting. We go and visit right now Emporia State University and we've done University of Missouri at St. Louis and talk to, and this is really fun, we talk to these educators who are in sophomore, junior classes, not only because it's a great recruiting technique, but it's also because we want to give back and let them know what they should expect in a great district. And so that is really fun to watch their eyes light up when we talk about all the great things that this district does, how we support first-year teachers and how we continue to provide opportunities for our career educators. And then we have early hire candidates coming in as well, those numbers are constantly ticking up. So early hire, we take a look at our hard-to-fill positions traditionally and we go out and we get the best and brightest before anybody else can get them. And that is a really fun opportunity for us. It's a lot like being a college football coach, you go out and you get them and you bring them home to Olethwaite because that's where they belong. And in the spring, we couple that with what you've already heard with our Future Educator Academy and we plant the seeds early there. So those are a little bit about our certified recruiting events. And moving on to my counterpart, Dr. Kathy Donovan, who's going to continue.
This slide just highlights some additional recruiting that we do just through advertising. So of course, we have our website, LinkedIn, and then occasionally we'll, depending on the need, we have some other websites that we can post jobs. And then all the social media, we're doing everything that we can. Yard and street signs, I don't know if you've ever, if you were at any of the events like at ODAC or Cback, we've done advertisements before on the video boards. And then just, we do flyers. And then like Justin talked about, we're doing more, getting more out to the colleges and universities. We did that in the past and then COVID kind of shut that down, so now they're opening those opportunities up a little bit more. Of course, we have all kinds of swag, you'll see some of those items in your bag. One thing I wanted to share too, before we let Michelle start talking about the classified recruiting, is certified, we also are recruiting substitutes. Substitutes is also an area of shortage. So our substitute team, they do some recruiting events as well and we were doing some brainstorming, they saw the pens that we're using for swag. So we created a pen that has information on who to contact if you're interested in subbing. So our team's been getting those out to grocery stores, dentist's office, doctor's office, and it has a phone number on there. I don't know yet how many people, if we have some substitute interest based on that, but just anything we can do, we're doing to try to recruit all certified staff. Michelle, now we'll talk a little bit about classified. Oh, there's a picture just of a few of our fall events, so you can see what we actually do.
All right, good evening, I'm Michelle Morris, Director of Classified Personnel. I'm going to speak on behalf of the classified folks with regard to our recruitment efforts. And as you can imagine, our recruitment efforts for classified personnel look a little bit different than certified staff. And the reason for that is due to the nature of the variety of positions that we have with our classified staff. Not only do we have paras and aides that work directly with our students, which we would be competing against other school districts for, but we also have food service, we have custodial, we have clerical, technology, payroll, bookkeepers. And so as you can imagine, we are not only competing with our local neighbors, Blue Valley, Shawnee Mission, all the other school districts, but as other employers as a whole. You know, if you think about all the employers in the area, be it restaurants, be it retail, be it Garmin, any of those places, they are seeking many of those same positions as well. So our recruiting efforts look a little bit different. We each year host our classified job fairs, one in July, one in January, and I'm going to shamelessly plug the one that we have scheduled, July 25th, Thursday, Olethwaite South, 4:00 to 6:30, no appointment necessary. It's a great opportunity for anyone who is interested in a classified position with the district to come in. We have our administrators, they set up their own table, provide their own swag to kind of give a personality to what their school is and what their environment and culture is. Folks can come in, learn more about the positions they have available. We also offer on-the-spot interviews for those who are interested, so it's a great opportunity. Really have a lot of success at these events. You may have seen some of the signs that we posted around town, although I think the snow has kind of buried some of those. So we are doing a social media blast to get the word out. We're also encouraging our principals, any newsletters that are going out to please, you know, put the word out in that way too. I also host locally hosted, I'm sorry, I attend locally hosted job fairs. You know, you'd be surprised at how many there actually are. I have one that I'm going to be attending January 23rd. It is hosted by a company called Step Up Jobs and that'll be at the Olethwaite Community Center. And that's open to any employer in the area. So I get a variety of folks coming in, looking for different types of positions. And oftentimes I find that some people maybe have not considered working for the school district. You know, when you think of working for a school district, the first thing that comes to mind is a teaching position. But as we all know, there are so many other non-teaching career opportunities within the school district, so it's a great opportunity for me to speak with these people and get them to apply. I don't know if any of you listen to any of these radio stations up there, but we have had several radio ad campaigns on 93.3, 102.1, 104.3, at 106.5. I've also done some job fairs that have been hosted by KC La Mega, they're a radio station. Then we just concluded a digital billboard campaign that we ran from November 20th through December 20th. It was held on eight different billboards throughout the Kansas City area. We had four different billboards that ran digitally and they rotated around the different locations. So they were off of like I-70, 635, 435, I-35. So many of you were out shopping, you may have seen a billboard. I drove by one every morning on my way to work. So that was a fun event, a fun campaign to put into place. The company that I worked with was fantastic, they actually provided us a discount rate to run those billboard ads, so we appreciated that. Of course, with the help of our Community Relations Department, we do a lot of social media campaigns. And again, as I mentioned, newsletters, we encourage our administrators to, you know, include this type of information in any newsletter or parent communication that they may send out. We are also partnering with the staffing agency to help with hiring paras, you know, as we all know, that is a challenging position to fill. And so they are helping us with that. And I wanted to share some pictures. So the four pictures on the left, those were the billboards that rotated throughout the Kansas City area. And then again, I'm shamelessly plugging my job there, Thursday, January 25th, 4:00 to 6:00, Olethwaite South. Thank you.
So of course, it's one thing to recruit staff members to our district, but a whole nother then to make sure that we are pouring into them and growing them professionally so that they stay with us. So we now flip to kind of that second phase of our process and that is cultivating our staff members, whether that be supporting our new educators or providing those segues and pathways for our classified staff. So I'm going to ask Dr. Addison to come back up and share a little bit about the new educator supports we have in place.
I'm going to go kind of quickly through this because I know there's a lot of text and you all will have an opportunity to read over it. But I also want to start off by saying, as we talk about our comprehensive induction program that we have for new educators, it's something that we are looking at very closely right now and know that it needs some adjusting as we look at the different pathways that teachers are coming to us from. We have lots of student teachers or lots of new teachers coming to us as a second career. So they've missed that traditional pathway of becoming an educator as they do a Master of Arts in Teaching based on their bachelor's degree. The comprehensive nature of an induction program will stay the same. It'll be the kinds of things that we're offering and the ways that we're doing things that I think are going to need to be updated for these teachers that are coming to us. The communication piece is always going to be so incredibly critical, particularly in a large district. But as many of you know, we've already started hiring for the 24-25 school year, which is super exciting. But we also know that all of these teachers have many, many opportunities in many other districts. And this generation of educators need to feel connected and part of our Olethwaite family immediately. So we have communicated with them, we have held an event for them already and will continue to communicate with them. We also host a four-day orientation. This is what every district in the United States probably does for their new educators. And that will continue, but what we present during that time, we need to adjust. We know that teachers need more time understanding how to use the resources that we have to teach our students now than ever before. Back in the day, when many of us began teaching, we had resources that basically told us how to do it. And now those resources are much more complex and have all kinds of different components that we have to know and be able to support. So we are looking carefully at how we do our orientation come this fall. The biggest piece, and I think one of the greatest retention factors that we have with our educators, is the fact that we have a great mentoring and coaching program for our educators. All educators new to Olethwaite have an instructional coach, they all have a building-level mentor that they work with. And those programs are well researched and we feel like they are meeting the needs of our new educators, but we are constantly surveying and asking. I just sent out a survey yesterday to new educators on a snow day and I got like a huge response. So I was really excited, I set it out in the evening, I thought they would get it this morning when they came to school, but they went ahead and filled it out. The professional development piece that continues on as they are new educators is also something that we continue, whoops, that we continue with throughout their time as a new educator. We also have ways that we are recognizing them and providing them additional support. We have our Epic Learning Series, which is an after-school professional learning opportunity for all of our new educators. We have our affinity groups that many of our new educators have become involved with our Olethwaite Public Schools. Our Olathe Public Schools Foundation offers us lots of ways to be able to support and recognize our new educators. And then, of course, we have the Kansas Horizon Award, which I think Dr. Iger will actually be making an announcement about this afternoon or this evening. So we're very excited to be able to recognize our new educators that way. The last piece that I want to talk about is, it is a retention piece, but it is also a recruitment piece. And it is something that we are so very proud of, and I think you all have heard bits and pieces about, our SPED MAT fellowship, which is a program that we have in partnership with Pittsburgh State University and is fully funded by our Olathe Public Schools Foundation. We recruit paraeducators who are interested in becoming special education teachers. Those paraeducators need to hold a bachelor's degree in order to apply for this because it is a master's program. We currently have 12 paraeducators in the program. Of those 12, we have nine of them that are serving as full-time teachers in our district and three more that will likely slide into placements in the fall. We're proud of this, we're excited about it. At the Fall Foundation Breakfast, this was one of the areas where folks were able to contribute. And so we're hopeful that we will be able to continue this program for one more year. The last thing I'll talk about are onsite master's degree programs. This is something I think is fairly unique. A lot of our neighboring districts will talk about having an onsite program, but really they tend to be online programs. We actually have students come in, we teach the first hours of a program, and then they complete the rest online. We've got a program with ESU for our new educators. We've got the Baker Program, which of course is open to anybody for educational administration after they have taught for five years. But we also have great support in our department to help teachers who want to get a master's degree to find the right program for them, whether it be for financial reasons or a different academic program. So we have all of that kind of advising available right here onsite in the district.
I'm back, friends. Passport Event, PAS represents paras, aides, Support Staff, and Subs. Our Passport Events are all about bringing the universities to us. Okay, our paras are busy enough doing their thing. So we have invited those partnering universities to come two different times a year, once in the fall, once in the spring. This spring, April 17th, it'll be from 4:30 to 7:00. Not a shameless plug, honeys, I need you here. Paras, aides, Support Staff, and Subs. Saying that, what do we do those evenings? We have conversations and we connect those that are ready to launch themselves into a pathway, a pipeline, and we're connecting them with the best fit. Not one university is going to be a best fit for all. Now, the beautiful thing is that evening, in those evenings, we talk about scholarships. We bring FAFSA to the house. That is complicated stuff, y'all. Okay, we also bring KSD in. KSDE brings their, Shane is the guy who literally signs the documentation for all certifications in all of Kansas. He comes to our event. And every time that he comes to our event, he's in awe of the dedication that we have here in Olathe to our paras, aides, Support Staff, and Subs. He helps them on their journey. Another thing that we do is we make sure that we follow up, all cohorts get a follow-up with Mrs. Hillman. Each cohort, and this is our sixth cohort coming, so we have five other teams of paras, aides, Support Staff, and Subs that have come through this training. Now, the exciting part is, take a look at these numbers. Thirty-one are currently in programs now. Thirty-one. Fifty-nine are ready to launch if we have two things, time and money. Time and money. Well, the time, we don't have to work with them on that because that's something that you make on the journey. But the money, well, we're going to talk more about that coming up. Here's what I will tell you, though. When it comes to who we have in the pathways, we're allowing them space and grace to do their thing, but we are one phone call away, and I get many phone calls for things like, "Hillman, I need to remember how to write an essay," all the way to "Hillman, I have my four-year degree, I'm working on my master's degree, tell me how to stay connected with Olathe." Those phone calls come through our office, and it is our pleasure to work with our Passport people. The numbers are speaking to them, about themselves. This is exciting work, friends. Paras, aides, Support Staff, and Subs deserve our attention.
So now we're moving on to the third and final phase, and that, of course, is looking at how we really continue to pour into our staff and how we can make sure that those great educators and staff members stay with us. And as I shared at the beginning, we harken back to the strategic plan and that specific outcome that's focused in on our compensation and benefits. So I am honored to have Eric Hanson come up and share with you some of the work he and his team have done around these areas.
Good evening. Thank you, LaShelle. As was mentioned earlier in the presentation, one of our strategic goals is the, is to be a destination district for the brightest and best that are out there. In order to accomplish that, it's no secret that we have to remain competitive when it comes to compensation and benefits. As a result, our team is constantly evaluating opportunities to enhance and fine-tune our pay and benefits to ensure competitive competitiveness and also to align with the district's strategic goals. When we turn our attention to the certified salary schedule, obviously, this is a major carrot that educators have to ponder when it comes to where they want to spend their career, whether it's where they want to start their career, maybe if they're making or considering a mid-career change, or where they want to potentially retire from. I will say this, in the time that I've been in the district, I've been encouraged by the collaboration that has taken place between district administration and ONEA leadership when it comes to committees and subcommittees that have been developed to study the salary schedule and to also work on the extracurricular and academic support piece that's so critical. When you look at the slide there, obviously, you can see that we're trying to highlight the fact that we went through a major change when it came to the actual structure of the district's salary schedule that was created back in 2008. The goal of that change was to kind of look at retention, recruitment, and fiscal sustainability. Obviously, everything that we do, we have to be able to balance with the funds that we have available. But we've got five steps there that we kind of followed in that transition from the old salary schedule to the more, the salary schedule that you would see more likely when you look at other districts. So the first thing that we did in the move was we basically looked at where everybody was at on the old schedule, transitioned them to the new schedule, which guaranteed them a minimum $750 increase in and of itself. After that, then we moved everybody down another step on the salary schedule, obviously increasing that, the value of that change. For those that were eligible for salary schedule advancement, they also received an additional bonus level when they made that transition. And then finally, because our salary schedule was compacted, we had quite a few staff who were maxed out on Level 18. So for those folks, they received some additional bonus steps in addition to the other ones that were described. So obviously, when we think about all the direction that we're going here to try to entice people to come to the district, to train them up, to get them thinking about working in Olathe, this is going to be something that they have to consider. On the other side of the equation, we've got all of the work that's been going on behind the seams to kind of look at what we're doing when it comes to our support staff. In the three years that I've been in the district, we've done a lot of work, as you can imagine, in an effort to stay competitive. And it's very challenging. Since the pandemic, we've seen starting salaries and starting pay at competing employers really, really increased by leaps and bounds. And so we're constantly looking at what are paying our people right now in ways that we can increase that compensation. Over the first two years that I was here, you can see the pay groups that we really focused on in an effort to reward them for staying in the district and doing the work that they do, or to entice them to come to the district and work for us. But para-professionals, computer learning associates, health room assistants, food service, ELL aides, we provided additional compensation to them over and above that base increase that everyone in the district received in those years. And mainly, that was geared around either market rate adjustments or longevity pay. And then you can see how the list has really grown in the year that we're in this year right now. We have added the focus, we've kind of broadened the groups of employees that we were really trying to target, and we've done a lot of things to enhance pay, again, on the longevity side of the equation, as well as remaining competitive in the market. So that's a lot of what we've done on the compensation side. There's so many people that are involved in this process, it would be hard to list all of them, but just know that we've got a great team that works well together in staying on top of those important items. And then when we think about what we're doing as a district when it comes to the employee benefit side, because obviously, sometimes it's easy to lose sight of what an important carrot that can be, but one of the things that I think is important for people to understand is that the district has had a decades-long relationship with Blue Cross Blue Shield. And one thing that does is when it comes to your employees, it kind of ensures a consistent and perpetual carrier that they can become accustomed to. I've been in districts where we've had to make changes to other carriers, and that can really rock the boat on people's comfort level when it comes to potentially having to change doctors and hospitals and networks and become accustomed to a different system of copays and deductibles and things of that nature. So, you know, hats off to the district for the work that we've done over all the years to try and maintain that relationship. Obviously, you also need to understand that when it comes to the renewal process, we put on our, we sharpen our pencils, we put on our glasses, and we go to work on making sure that the contract we're signing is competitive. But in the end, we've been able to maintain that long-term relationship. Something else that we do is we offer a lot of options for our employees. When it comes to the tiers that we offer our staff, they've got five different tiers to choose from. Basically, employee, employee and spouse, employee and children, family, or two-employee family. And what that does is that really allows them to select a cost-effective plan for them. If you're in a district that only has a single and a family plan option, and you have just yourself and your spouse or yourself and your children, you're having to select that family plan option, which can be very expensive. So kudos to us for the work that's gone on in the past to give us that opportunity to provide to our staff. In addition to that, we also offer six different plans and several networks of doctors and hospitals for our staff to choose from. We have a Preferred Care Blue Plan, which is a very broad network of doctors and hospitals. Obviously, with that comes a little bit greater cost. We have a Blue Select Plus Plan, which is a more narrow network, fewer doctors and hospitals to choose from, allows us to kind of fine-tune that cost. And then finally, for folks that are comfortable, they can sign up for a Spira Plan and kind of direct all of their care through a Spira facility. That plan would be the most affordable for people, but then it gives them fewer options when it comes to where they might want to go otherwise. Additionally, a study that I kind of conducted a year ago looked at a lot of variables when it comes to our medical plan and compared it to a lot of the districts across the metro. And a few areas where we really stand out would be our lowest annual out-of-pocket maximums. When you look at how much the districts that we compete with have in their plans for out-of-pocket maximums for their employees, these numbers, 1,500 to 3,200, are generally lower than what people are going to experience if they work for some of our competing school districts. So not only are we providing them an affordable plan on the premium side, but we're doing everything that we can to limit their exposure to out-of-pocket costs. On top of that, if you sign up for one of our high-deductible health plans in a district, we will contribute $140 a month to that plan. That goes into your HSA. That allows you to have those extra dollars to meet some of those out-of-pocket costs. And I think you can kind of see, based on our enrollment, when two-thirds of our employees have signed up for a high-deductible health plan, they understand the importance and embrace that contribution that the district is willing to make on their behalf. Something else that I want to highlight, when we go out and we try to recruit people, we really need to try to figure out a way to talk about the minimal out-of-pocket costs that we have compared to other districts. And what this does is this talks about the contribution that the employer here in Olathe makes to our employees. On the average, you're going to see most districts offer an employee contribution that's based on a single family plan, excuse me, a single plan for their employees. What we do is we go above and beyond that. So if you select one of those other tiered plans, we're contributing more dollars to the cost of that plan for you, which limits and lowers your out-of-pocket cost on the premium side. So when you look at what we did in '22, '23, on the average, we contributed $960 per month to whatever plan our employee elected to be on. And that is a good $200 to $250 better than what a lot of our peer districts do. So again, when we talk about ways that we're, initiatives that we're making to try to make it really enticing for people to work here, we need to really focus on the work that's going on here. Last but not least, we want to talk a little bit about wellness, something exciting that we've worked on here in the past year. As you know, during the pandemic, wellness programs kind of took a backseat, kind of took a hit because you really couldn't have that interaction that you generally need to have a successful wellness program. But thankfully, through a cooperative effort that we've been engaged in with the City of Olathe and the Olathe YMCA, we've actually been able to offer, beginning in October, free fitness classes to all employees of the district. We're offering those classes on Monday through Thursday at five of our elementary schools. We have morning sessions, afternoon sessions. And so at no cost to employees of the district, they can go and attend some of these sessions. And then last but not least, obviously, we know that employee wellness is very important. And one of the things that we just got going here in the second semester is what we're calling our Wednesday Wellness Webinars. We have an employee assistance program that we do in conjunction with Telus or LifeWorks. And so we just got that program kicked off in an effort to kind of help people on that mental health side of the thing as well. So anyway, a lot that is going on to support the different initiatives that we've discussed here this evening. So I'm going to turn the floor back over to LaShelle.
Thank you, Eric. So that concludes all of the information we had to share this evening. I'm sure you can gather from all of these individuals just how fortunate I am to get to work with them every day. And all of the things they shared here this evening, I know are easy to share in a three-minute snippet, but I can promise you, they take immense number of hours and a ton of lift. And I just have to thank all of them because they, first and foremost, they care so much for people. And I think you can see that in all the things that they've created to support our staff. So I truly get to work with the best every day and am so thankful for that. But with all of that being said, we would be happy to take any questions you might have as well.
Board, any questions? Dr. Jokovic?
First, let me thank you for your presentation. Great information, and clearly, you do care about Olathe and staff we have now and those coming. And I also would just thank you for the creativity and thinking outside the box to continue to promote that. I have two questions that are pretty specific. One is related to the Saturday Scholars at Santa Fe Trail. I know it's hosted there. Is that only for Santa Fe kids or who's, which kids are involved?
Absolutely. Saturday Scholars is a program for sixth and seventh grade students. The premise of it is we bring in students that are eighth grade, high school, or collegiate level to become mentors, teacher leaders. It's based in STEAM, Science, Technology, Engineering, the Arts, and Mathematics. And we also teach ASL now, which is phenomenal. It is, right now, a nine-week program that we host only at Santa Fe Trail. That does not mean in the future that is the only school that will host it. It is, as using the term she just said, a heavy lift, but it is worth every moment. Typical year, we'll have 30 to 40 students and 20 to 30 future teachers. And they work, they work for 10 weeks, one training, and at the end, we get to celebrate. So right now, currently, it's only at Santa Fe Trail.
Okay, thank you. And then the second question I have is actually about substitute teachers and specifically those who are signing up, if you will, from other careers, they don't have the educational background. Is there additional training that's provided to them before they walk into that classroom the first day?
Yes, yeah. So our substitute services team provides a pretty intensive orientation, if you will, for our substitutes. And then, of course, our schools are huge supports in making sure that they have what they need as well. Am I missing anything else, Dr. Addison?
I'll just add one thing. Shelly Longspur, our manager of substitutes, her team, they've created like their virtual training sessions that include some things on classroom management, technology, of course, technology frightens our substitutes sometimes, so they have that module as well. And they're encouraged to go through that before they...
Okay. Again, thank you.
Yeah, sure.
Board, any other questions? Ms. Steele?
I feel like I've just watched the movie, what is that, Field of Dreams, Build It, and they will come. And I feel like we're building it, they're starting to come out of the cornfield. But anyway, great work. I do have a few questions. Oh, one, Amy, this Oscar, you know what he said, "I've never been more connected to a school than I am now." What a great candidate for you to...
Hundred percent. New Oscar before he walked in the door.
Okay, good. I bet you did, yes.
Phenomenal, phenomenal. IT, in all the AIM classes we've been engaged with, and that's a beautiful thing, in Oscar, that whole crew, I know them. And when I say three out of the four have already signed the paperwork, just find out more, just learn what education is about. So yes, he's a rock star.
Wonderful. Wonderful, that's great. So, I would say, one question I have is, how do we engage with the Chamber? And what connections do we have there in making sure they know what openings we have, but also our recruitment efforts? And do we overlap and intertwine with them?
Yeah, you know, I think that's a constant conversation with the city and with the Chamber. They're always so very supportive and, you know, willing to help in any way, shape, or form. You know, we've had a lot of conversations within our department with, you know, kind of that dreaming big piece, and, you know, talked about how can we maybe even engage more with the Chamber, particularly when we start talking about things like housing and some of those things that come into play that really kind of pose a challenge sometimes when you're asking somebody to relocate for a job. But continuing to look for any opportunities to expand in that partnership with them as well.
Yeah. I would think, you know, leaning into that space, maybe there's a commercial about how cool it is to live in Olathe and all the things we offer. I have a feeling probably local recruitment is probably our most successful, is my guess. But even so, to remind those kids who are coming back from college or choosing not to come back from college, remind them, this is a great community to be in. So, I don't know, yeah, if the Chamber could help us out more.
Well, and they're great about, you know, welcoming us and inviting us to speak at different, you know, the Johnson County Economic Development and that kind of thing, that then helps us to get the word out that in turn, then even our businesses and industry in the area, we know that our schools are a number-one draw for them as well. So, it's kind of a little bit of a reciprocal relationship, if you will. So, really getting the word out through them as well in terms of, you know, how can they help in supporting some of the areas that we need that help in too.
Yeah, good, good. Just a couple more. Eric, I couldn't agree more with the work you're doing. I know in my private life, professional private life, that in recruiting young people, they really just want to know that salary. And there's so much more that goes into that that's so important. Also, being a small business owner, the consistency that you speak about is absolutely a benefit to the employees and the constancy of having Blue Cross, Blue Shield, as well as the low buy-in for them into a plan. That's great. So, I commend you just to keep beating that drum, because it's hard to talk that talk when really they're just looking at that number on a salary schedule, but it's important. Yeah, yeah. Lastly, we talked a little bit about the financial things that we've done for classified staff. I would be interested, it doesn't have to be tonight, to learn more about the retention we're doing for our classified staff and what conversations we're having with them. And then I presume the wellness stuff is for all employees, regardless of classified or certified?
Yeah. Yeah, so one of the things that we have kicked off this year, or maybe reinvigorated, ooh, that was, this year is our Classified Employee Council. So, Michelle and Eric have been leading that work in getting some representation from our classified staff together to start, you know, having those conversations and being able to, sometimes it's even just providing professional development to them, or providing insights into supports and benefits that are already in place, that sometimes it's difficult to get that to our classified staff, because they are not necessarily active on their email all the time and that kind of thing. So, that's one of the things this year that we've kicked off to try and add another layer of kind of that communication with our classified staff. And as we mentioned before, some of those specific professional growth areas in trying to offer some vertical, you know, movement, if you will, for our classified staff. But absolutely, be happy to share more, too.
Yeah, that'd be great. I think anything we can do to make sure, you know, when our employees feel seen, they feel a part of something.
Absolutely.
And what a great team you all are. So, thank you very much.
Board, any other questions, comments?
Mr. Boyd, can I make one quick comment? Thank you. I did want to circle back to the relationship with the Chamber just a little bit. I really appreciated that conversation. As superintendent, I have the opportunity to sit on the Olathe Chamber Board, and unlike most people that sit on the board, I'm asked to give an update every single meeting about what's happening in the school district. And I'm so happy to share that, you know, each time, I'm always asked whether I mention it, or if I don't, I'm asked about our staffing needs and what we're seeing. And in the same room is always people from higher education, both the community college and also our area universities. And out of that oftentimes comes different ideas and, you know, those sorts of things. So, you know, I do hear the Chamber talk a lot about how important education is, and, you know, what a thing that is for our community. And, you know, we've had a great partnership. But I do think that as we look at the job market and some of the things that we're challenged with, that there's certainly opportunity there for additional conversation and those kinds of things as well.
I just want to thank Dr. Sieg and her team for the work that they're doing for our district, because we know without educators and educator-support professionals, the work doesn't happen. And in the business of educating kids, you need those group of people. I remember a time, you know, previous years, you know, where there was a tendency to stop at a challenge. And I appreciate the work that your team is doing, is trying to overcome those challenges. And I'm encouraged by the things that are on the horizon, so thank you.
Thank you, we appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Moving on to our public comments, 5.01.
At each regular meeting of the Board of Education, reserves limited time for individuals to address the board. We ask that your comments be germane, that is, related to the business that this board effectuates. Noncompliance may result in the president interrupting to redirect. We request that individual speakers limit their comments to three minutes. The clerk will monitor the time and notify the speaker when the three-minute time limit has expired. Please direct your comments to the board and not the guests or staff. If a response is appropriate, the president will respond or refer to another individual. In an effort to respect privacy, we ask that speakers refrain from discussing personal complaints involving individual staff members or students. Audience disruption is also not permitted. Those speaking are advised that public comments are videotaped recorded for broadcast on the district's educational access channel and audiotape recorded as a matter of public record. Individuals addressing the board should come to the podium at the front of the room and state your name, city and state, and relationship to the district.
All right, our first speaker is Megan Bricks.
Good evening and happy School Board Appreciation Month. My name is Megan Bricks. I reside in DeSoto, Kansas, and I'm a proud elementary music teacher here in the Olathe School District. I want to begin by congratulating our re-elected and newly-elected board members. I'm very excited for the direction of our school district. I appreciate all of your time and dedication, as I know this isn't your full-time paid job. Thank you for reading all of the emails, answering the phone calls, and meeting with community members who want to share their thoughts with you. Thank you for all that you do. Tonight, I'm here to discuss the power of educator advocacy. Throughout my undergraduate career, we began to learn about educator advocacy, especially being an educator within the fine arts. We heard about the importance of advocating for your program and educating the community on the impact that your content area can have on children. Last week, I got the opportunity to see this in action. During our district professional development with our content areas, the elementary general music teachers were able to meet, and I hadn't expected the advocacy that would come from it. Within the room, there were about 10 student teachers who had just begun their student teaching experiences with us, and they were able to hear firsthand about the passion that our educators have for teaching elementary music. These student teachers got to hear educators advocating to have equitable opportunities for our elementary ensembles, including band strings and special chorus. As we begin to think about change in our schedule next year, we must ensure that our students are afforded the best possible experiences in the Olathe School District. These student teachers' first experience was witnessing educator advocacy in real life as we voiced our concerns and shared our passions for providing all students with musical opportunities. Then on Friday, many Kansas educators, including educators from our own very school district, showed up to advocate for the state of Kansas to fully fund students who receive special education services. To see my colleagues and Olathe educators and community members stepping up to the plate speaks so much and brings so much joy to my heart. Advocacy is my passion. I hope that as we work through a difficult transition to a three-tiered schedule for next school year, that we can be open and receptive to all the educational advocates who truly want the best for our students, including our very own Olathe educators. Throughout this process, I hope that you will listen, ask questions, and gather input from the people who live this every day. Please be open and considerate as educators advocate for what works best for their students and school community. My hope is that this process can further strengthen the relationship amongst the Olathe community as we work to ensure every student has the best possible educational experience as possible. Again, thank you so much for serving for us.
Thank you. Patty Lantner?
Thank you to the board member and former members that have actually had the success of individual children as the main concern rather than collectivism. Parents know that it is extremely difficult to keep going when the system and its partners constantly push against individual achievement. When your feet are so cold, they're numb, they hurt more when they thaw out and are waking up. You can't move forward with asleep feet, because you can't walk. The Olathe schools cannot move forward when the public and even teachers are in the dark. Teachers and children are set up to fail when education is hijacked for transformational ideology. The revised college and career readiness is much more of a psychological profile of the child than anything at all academic. It is very subjective and unmeasurable without academic competencies. It seems to line up more with UNESCO goals of reducing dissonance in children, so kids accept whatever's thrown at their way, even when it defies all logic. I would encourage anyone to opt out of this. You can check it out yourself at CCCframework.org from the KSD website. The Goals to Communism is in the Congressional Record, check that out also. If you want Olathe people to stay in the dark, you cast doubt on the opposition and call them extremists, but don't ever say what your own true values are. You could prevent concerned people from saying what they need to say in opposition to their First Amendment rights, then cast blame on the speaker and call them an extremist when they call you out on it. You stacked the speaker list with ghosts last month, when you want nothing but sunshine for the departing board. You could pretend that you aren't causing all of the issues that create the logistical situation with buses, so that you can get to your real goals. Create hardships for drivers in terms of deciding no AC on district buses, no discipline allowed by drivers of the bullies, creating a safety situation for all, don't pay them on snow days, change contracts to a company that was already being sold, get money back for shrinking the schedule, while claiming that none of these things are happening. Creating hardships for most are said to be for equity, when it really hurts the marginalized the most, but caters to the few athletes. Use the media to your advantage to show what you want to show, throw all support to continuing the collective goals of the machine. Producing articles saying that Olathe is the best place, Olathe School District is the best place to work. Why do we need a retention group if it's the best place to work? John Forbes Carrier Magazine said that, and said the elite need to decide for us. Since everyone is happy, why do we need this? Teachers and parents would be happier if the embedded ideology is removed. Plumbing enrollment causes a budget shortfall, which causes layoffs, and the cycle continues. Transformational social-emotional learning has been in place for 10 years but has not worked. It is described as fluffy soft skills, even though it intends to carve out dissonance in children and continue the decline of knowledge and have children believe the current thing pushed, whether true or not. On the list for tonight is the kite runner to be approved in the future action items. Do kids need to see themselves through a bloody graphic rape of a 12-year-old boy? Does anyone need to see that?
This letter has expired.
Okay, that's fourth-grade reading level, by the way.
Thank you. Sonia Larson?
I feel so unprepared. I don't have no notes. I just have some things. See, there's a phone here that I actually wrote something down. I am Sonia Larson. I am a substitute teacher here in the district, yay. And then I also am a graduate of Olathe, '94. Go Olathe Hawks. And I have two kids, yeah, just two now, in the Still District. I actually just want to talk to you about next year, when you guys are, I know, with the new school schedule with elementary kids, because I have one of those, the for-and-after school care. I do know there are some issues with that happening. I just want you guys to make sure that you're aware that the parents who don't normally have to do this are aware ahead of time how that works. We sign up for that in April. So, ignorance is not going to be bliss in this situation. So, I just want to make sure that you guys put that information out there ahead of time so they know how this works. And it is like really like getting Beyonce tickets and Taylor Swift tickets. It's not, it's not a joke, it's not a game. So, just please make sure that they know that, that you have to be online at that time, otherwise you will not get a spot, and if you lose your spot, you're, I don't know, you're messed up. The other thing that I want you to point out is that for those parents that have kids that have reduced in free lunch, theirs is reduced for those, for that program. However, the week of Christmas, that break, in spring break, is not reduced. It is $35 a day. So, you are expecting parents who are not normally paying that much for the whole week to pay that for a day. So, that's something that maybe if nothing else, these parents' enrollment know, hey, this week is going to cost you this much, so that they're not like I was, kind of like, oh, this is $35 a day. So, that they're not, kind of not knowing. So, I just really wanted to just bring some information that I don't think that the board is aware of that happens to those parents that do have to have kids before and after school. I mean, it is, it is what it is, but that's the schedule. So, I just want to make sure you guys are aware that those things that may, puddles that may come up, that most parents are not used to. But again, like getting that information out when that comes up ahead of time, so that those parents that are going to have to use those services, who normally did not have to, will be aware of when that happens, so that they're not in the dark beginning of next school year going, how do I get before school after circle? That's all I've got.
Thank you. Kinsley Pratt.
I am 10 years old. I am autistic and intellectually disabled. I have really bad anxiety. I want to talk about how I was locked in a room for an hour by my old principal and other support staff. I got angry because I could not understand what they were teaching and struggling with changes. I need extra support and learn different, but my old IEP team did not help me. They got angry because I cannot learn the same. I was secluded, and it makes me angry and sad when I tried to leave. The room, the behavior coach shut the door on me so I could not leave. I got hurt, and they did not call my mom, and they did not let me leave, and that is seclusion. My new principal is very nice and does not get angry. My new resource teacher is the best and helps me. My helper teacher is very nice. I want you to tell my old school principal and staff, they cannot treat people like that. Please stop walking just to kids like me in rooms. Thank you.
Thank you. And that concludes our public comments for this evening. Moving to action and consent. Board, any comments on those agenda items, or can we take those all together?
Move to approve consent agenda items, numbers 6.01 to 6.13 as presented.
Second. We have a motion by Mrs. Steele and a first second by Mr. Babbitt.
Mr. Kuhn?
Yes.
Mrs. Reagan?
Yes.
Dr. Yurkovich?
Yes.
Mrs. Steele?
Yes.
Mr. Babbitt?
Yes.
Mr. Boyd?
Yes.
Motion carries six, zero. Moving to action, bid, contracts, and agreements, 7.01 through 7.08. Board, any questions, anything we need to pull out of those?
Move to approve 7.01 through 7.08 as presented.
We have a motion by Mrs. Steele and a first second by Mrs. Reagan.
Mrs. Reagan?
Yes.
Dr. Yurkovich?
Yes.
Mrs. Steele?
Yes.
Mr. Boyd?
Yes.
Mr. Babbitt?
Yes.
Mr. Kuhn?
Yes.
Motion carries six to zero. Moving to, ooh, action other, 8.01. All right, so, this is a three-step process. We'll need three separate motions. We'll need three separate motions, a motion to open nominations, a motion to cease nominations, and a motion to appoint. For 8.01, the appointment to the Head Start Policy Council. Is there a motion?
I move that we open nominations to appoint a board representative to the Head Start Policy Council.
Second.
We have a motion by Dr. Yurkovich and a second by Mr. Babbitt. Are there any nominations?
Mr. President, I'd like to nominate Claire Reagan to serve for our 2425 Head Start Policy Council Board Representative. I think she would do us well and is familiar with that organization as well as has littles of her own, and I think she'd represent well and be a good, a good one to serve for this next year.
All right. Are there any other nominations?
Move to cease nominations.
Second.
We have a motion by Mrs. Steele and a second by Dr. Yurkovich.
Move to appoint Claire Reagan to serve as the 2425 Head Start Policy Council Board Representative.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion by Mrs. Steele and a second by Mr. Babbitt.
Mrs. Steele?
Yes.
Mrs. Reagan?
Yes.
Mr. Boyd?
Yes.
Mr. Kuhn?
Yes.
Mr. Babbitt?
Yes.
Dr. Yurkovich?
Yes.
Motion carries six zero.
Congratulations. Thank you.
All right, 8.02. I think Chris gave me a funny look. We didn't do a vote after we cease nominations?
Or after.
Or opened them. So 8.02, so I won't get in trouble with council. We're going to have to take three separate votes. All right. 8.02, is there a motion?
I move that we open nominations to appoint an Olathe school board member to the Board of Directors for KASB.
Second.
All right. We have a motion by Dr. Yurkovich and a second by Mrs. Reagan.
Dr. Yurkovich?
Yes.
Mrs. Steele?
Yes.
Mr. Babbitt?
Yes.
Mr. Boyd?
Yes.
Mrs. Reagan?
Yes.
Mr. Kuhn?
Yes.
That motion carries six zero. Are there any nominations?
I would like to nominate Julie Steele for this position. She, I believe, is knowledgeable, would be an excellent representative of Olathe, and collaborative on this Board of Directors. She's participated in the KASB leadership program, and so I would nominate Julie Steele for this position.
Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations?
I move that we cease nominations.
Second.
We have a motion by Dr. Yurkovich and a second by Mrs. Reagan.
Dr. Yurkovich?
Yes.
Mrs. Steele?
Yes.
Mr. Babbitt?
Yes.
Mr. Boyd?
Yes.
Mrs. Reagan?
Yes.
Mr. Kuhn?
Yes.
That motion carries six to zero.
I move to appoint Julie Steele to serve as the 202426 appointee for the KASB Board of Directors.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right. We have a motion by Dr. Yurkovich and a second by Mr. Babbitt.
Dr. Yurkovich?
Yes.
Mrs. Steele?
Yes.
Mr. Babbitt?
Yes.
Mr. Boyd?
Yes.
Mrs. Reagan?
Yes.
Mr. Kuhn?
I'm staying.
Motion carries five to one. Board, I'm going to read this resolution, just so everyone in the public knows what we're going to vote on and decide on. Whereas a vacancy exists in the membership of the Board of Unified School District Number 233 Johnson County, Kansas, and whereas KSA 25-2022 authorize a Board of Education to fill such vacancies no sooner than 15 days following publication of notice in a newspaper having general circulation in the school district, be it resolved that a clerk, that the clerk of the Board of Education Unified School District Number 233 Johnson County, Kansas, shall cause such notice to be published in the Kansas City Star newspaper. Is there a motion on 8.03?
Move to approve as presented.
Second.
We have a motion by Mrs. Steele and a second by Dr. Yurkovich.
Mr. Babbitt?
Yes.
Mr. Boyd?
Yes.
Mr. Kuhn?
Yes.
Mrs. Reagan?
Yes.
Mrs. Steele?
Yes.
Dr. Yurkovich?
Yes.
Motion carries 6.01. Board, just so I feel a little bit better about the 8.01 action that we took, I would like to go back and redo that the correct way, just so we're clear and we're clean and we don't have any issues later on. So 8.01, is there a motion?
Move to open nominations to appoint a board representative to the Head Start Policy Council.
Second.
We have a motion by Mrs. Steele and a second by Mrs. Reagan.
Mrs. Steele?
Yes.
Mrs. Reagan?
Yes.
Mr. Boyd?
Yes.
Mr. Kuhn?
Yes.
Mr. Babbitt?
Yes.
Dr. Yurkovich?
Yes.
All right. That motion carries six zero. Are there any nominations?
I'd like to nominate Claire Reagan.
I move that we cease nominations.
Second.
We have a motion by Dr. Yurkovich and a second by Mrs. Steele.
Mrs. Steele?
Yes.
Mrs. Reagan?
Yes.
Mr. Boyd?
Yes.
Mr. Kuhn?
Yes.
Mr. Babbitt?
Yes.
Dr. Yurkovich?
Yes.
That motion carries six zero.
I move to appoint Claire Reagan to serve as the 2425 Head Start Policy Council Board Representative.
Second.
We have a motion by Mrs. Steele and a second by Mr. Babbitt.
Mrs. Steele?
Yes.
Mrs. Reagan?
Yes.
Mr. Boyd?
Yes.
Mr. Kuhn?
Yes.
Mr. Babbitt?
Yes.
Dr. Yurkovich?
Yes.
Motion carries six zero. Moving on to future action items. Board, read through those. If you have any questions, please get those to Dr. Jaeger. We have one information written report about our bond, and as always, that information is updated on our website. Board, any topics for discussion?
Just a couple. I want to thank ONEA for their gift tonight, and thank Bob Courtney for, and the district for their gifts for school board appreciation, and for Teach Olathe. Thank you, Amy Hillman, fun bag of goodies. So, thank you very much. You know, I, if you hear me speak often or ever, I, you'll often hear me say that two things can be true. And although I look forward to the page that we're turning in the future ahead, I am also aware that, you know, we, we have work to do and challenges and standards we want to elevate, and we're certainly going to do that. And we have an amazing staff that's going to do that and have that at the forefront. So I'm very thankful for that, and I'm thankful to be here. And that doesn't mean we don't ask hard questions as board members. You can love this district and support it and see all the good that's happening, and just know that there are still hard questions being asked and expectations that are being spoken. I want to also say with Martin Luther King Day, Saturday, we have an event honoring our students who have presented their works, and it's at Olathe Northwest. And I was going to ask Kathleen, but I didn't see her here, and I think it's at 11:00 a.m. open to the public. Thank you, yeah. So that's super exciting. I sat on a committee that I was able to see some of the work that's already been turned in by students, and it is amazing and phenomenal. So you would very much enjoy and be blessed by going to that event at Olathe Northwest Saturday at 11:00 a.m. And that's all. Welcome, welcome Claire and Will, and thank you for all the work Stacy and Brad and your campaigns. I look forward to serving alongside you.
Board, any other comments? Mrs. Reagan?
Hi. Well, this has been an interesting and very wonderful evening of firsts. And first off, I really want to say thank you to the Human Resources Department for their excellent presentation. Having been a teacher myself, you know, just hearing of the supports that are in place for new educators, you know, those first three years are very difficult, and having seasoned professionals there to help you and stand next to you, and just seeing the commitment that, yes, it is about recruitment, but it is just as much about retention. So thank you so much. And I also wanted to thank Dr. Jaeger for sitting on the Special Education Task Force. It was an interesting conversation to watch unfold, and I was very proud for your contributions and that you are the superintendent of our district, and I felt like you spoke on behalf of the children of Kansas very well. So thank you for that time commitment, and I'm hopeful the task force will continue its work so that we can fully fund special education. Finally, I just had one question over winter break, and then as the school year is beginning, you know, you run into parents out in the world, and a lot of people ask me, you know, why did we start on a Friday? And especially since winter break ended last week, and why did we start on a Friday? And, you know, I said, that's a great question. I don't know. And so I guess, I'm curious, you know, I understand, you know, I think the negotiation process, the professional counsel, all that's involved in coming up with our calendar in tandem with, you know, the fact that holidays move every year. We've added more days to our Thanksgiving break, which adjusts things. But I'm also curious what kind of feedback is collected from our staff and from families on the days that we, the day we choose to start school, because I know a half-day Friday in August, you know, was, it felt a little anticlimactic for our family. We rev up for the first day, and then they come home for the weekend, and high schoolers had a first full week of school, which I imagine was fun for all of them. And, but I appreciate that there are very many forces at work when a calendar is decided. I would just hope, and I imagine it's so, that community feedback and professional feedback is taken. And so I guess that's a question and a comment, but thank you for all that you do in putting together that crazily complex puzzle.
Dr. Jaeger?
Yes. Do you want me to answer the question briefly as well? Okay. So I don't know if it was my comment time or if I was question answering. So, okay, very good.
Answering the question.
What you said is exactly right. There's a lot of forces that are part of coming up with our, our calendar each year in the school system. Fundamentally, it's a process with professional councils, so that's ONEA, working with administration, and ultimately the Board of Education. There's a subset from that group called Calendar Committee that gets together, probably getting ready to get together pretty quickly here, I would imagine, to set the calendar for the 2425, 2526 school year, excuse me. We're always, we're always working ahead. But one of the things that we have done in the past, and, you know, perhaps this is something that Mr. Albers could take to that group, is there has been times in our past where we have surveyed our, our parents and our guardians across the district about timing of breaks, you know, different sorts of start dates, end dates, things like that. And, you know, sometimes there's things that come forward that we can't adjust. Sometimes it's as simple as when we bring new staff in and start paying benefits and those kinds of things. So as you said, there's a lot involved with that, but it's probably been a good number of years since we've kind of, you know, received kind of more formal feedback from our communities. So that's certainly that, something that committee could consider. Yeah, Clint's going like this, so I think that means that he would take it to them, so.
Board, any other comments? Topics for discussion? Mr. Babbitt?
Just real quick, I'd just like to thank the community for the support and trust they've put in me and my companions up here. And I'd like to thank the current board for the support they're giving all of us, as well as the patience with our new members as we, we start to learn, and staff for answering all of the very random questions we'll throw at you all hours of the night. So, thank you, everybody.
Dr. Yurkovich?
I too would like to share my thanks and to welcome Claire and Will tonight, and to also say I appreciate the continued support to continue in this role, but am really looking forward to working with this team of people for the Olathe community, for the students, the staff, the parents, and just looking forward to, to doing great things for Olathe as has been our legacy for a very long time.
Well, welcome to Claire and Will. As you saw tonight, this isn't perfect. I, I tend to like to be a little bit lighthearted during our, as I run our meetings, but embrace the work, lean into the work. If I could offer one piece of advice, it would be to build relationships. I think that's the cornerstone of how this system, this institution, really works is of authentic relationships. So take that for what it's worth, and welcome to the team. Dr. Jaeger, floor yours.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Thank you all for your great comments tonight, and like everyone else, Claire and Will, I'd like to welcome you to the board as well. We're glad that you'll be serving with the rest of the team to support our students and our staff and in our community. And Brad and Stacy, congratulations to you as well. We're glad, glad you're going to be with us as well. I have a number of things tonight. My comments sometimes are all over the place, and tonight will probably be no exception to that. But I am excited that in the coming weeks, our community is going to start receiving some information about a rebranding project that we're working on here in the system. And Tony Rangel, who's actually with us tonight at the meeting, just through the video cameras, is the one working on that. He, he runs our cameras, but he will be leading this project for us along with the communications team. And, you know, really, the, the goal with it, and we'll have a video out about how we're getting our community involved, and what will be a pretty exciting process. But, you know, as, as Mrs. Steele said a second ago, you know, there are many strengths to our system, but one of our jobs is to continue to look forward about how we strengthen things, how we become better. And really, it's, it's time for us to stop, get community input, and really think about what is our brand as Olathe Public Schools? And, you know, there's some pretty practical things that are important to us as a system about it. One is almost every department in our district has created their own logo at this point. There's, there's not a central logo. Branding when we go out to recruit teachers and staff members, and a brand that hopefully says that we're a district that's rooted in tradition, but we also recognize that there's work we need to do, and we're going to move forward, and we're committed to doing that for every kid in the system. So Tony is going to lead that project. There'll be some things on social media. We're looking really forward to having our community, our students, and ours, that, those who live in our community engaged in that process. So I did want to mention tonight that that will be coming as well. I did also want to mention, you all passed a resolution tonight about the open seat on the Board of Education. So by about 10 o'clock tonight, there will be a page on our website up that will have all the steps outlined to, that the board will take to fill that position, as well as the online application for that, for somebody to print and fill out and bring in with proof of residency. Our timeline, your timeline, will be there as well. So I just wanted to be clear to our public that there is a place where that information can be held. It's probably important to also note that to fill that position, someone will need to live in District 3 within our area, so, and we have staff here that can do a check on that for anyone that needs help with that if they need to as well. While we were here tonight, kind of unusual thing for me to say in Olathe probably, but while we were here tonight, Dr. Michelle Hubbard and Shawnee Mission announced her retirement. And I just wanted to express publicly how much I appreciate Dr. Hubbard. I get the opportunity to work very closely with her on a lot of things in Johnson County, and she really is a superstar school leader. She's just awesome, and so I just wanted to publicly offer her congratulations and know that she'll continue to do great things, but she did announce her retirement while we were at this meeting tonight, so that, that happened as well. Also, our MLK event on Saturday, I think, Mr. Boyd, you remarked about that. Several of you've been in the past. Mrs. Steele remarked about that. Thank you, Mr. Boyd. But it really is an incredible event. But it really is an incredible event. If you've not had the opportunity to attend, it's at Olathe Northwest this year, which is great because we have more space for more people to come and see just the amazing work that our young people have done in, in recognizing Dr. King, and also the work that continues in our society today. So, I would encourage everyone to be there if you can. And then lastly, we had a really exciting event in the district today. So, every year, the State Department of Education picks some amazing first-year teachers to recognize, and they call them Horizon Award winners. And we've been really, really blessed as a system to have a number of them. We certainly don't have one every year. But this year, we got to be at Olathe West High School, and Dr. Randy Watson called to announce to Janelle Craig, a science teacher at Olathe West, that she was one of the Kansas Horizon Teachers of the Year. And, you know, I've had the opportunity to be part of several of those when Dr. Watson has called, no more special than the one today. You can just tell in interacting with her that she is truly a born educator, somebody that is passionate about what she does. And it was so fun to be in, in Mr. Dovcek's office when Randy Watson called to recognize her today. So, we'll have a formal press release and all of those kinds of things, but so fun, and it just speaks so highly of the work that, great segue to what happened tonight, really, with the presentation from HR about finding the very best people, but also supporting them once they're here. And she's just amazing. So, it was, it was a really cool thing to be with her today. So, more to come about that as well. Those are my comments this evening.
Thank you. Board, we have four executive sessions tonight. The first one will take 30 minutes, so moving on to 13 dot zero one, I will entertain a motion.
I move that the board go into executive session for the purpose of consultation with an attorney for the body or agency which would be deemed privileged in attorney-client relationship, and that the board return to the regular meeting at?
Eight thirty.
Eight? Eight twenty-five? Eight thirty P M. in this room.
Second.
I have a motion by Mrs. Steele and a second by Mrs. Reagan.
Mr. Boyd?
Yes.
Mrs. Reagan?
Yes.
Mr. Kuhn?
Yes.
Mr. Babbitt?
Yes.
Dr. Yurkovich?
Yes.
Mrs. Steele?
Yes.
Motion carries six zero. Are we upstairs?
Okay, so give me just a chance quick here.
Say three? I heard it.
No, not three.
Two. Motion that you need to extend to 30 minutes.
Aye.
Okay, and who wants to second it?
Second.
Thank you, Robert, and you're all in agreement.
Yes, we are.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh-huh. Thank you.
Thank you.
I move for the approval of the resolution of the dispute with regard to a special education student.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Kuhn and a second by Mrs. Reagan.
Mr. Kuhn?
Yes.
Mrs. Reagan?
Yes.
Dr. Yurkovich?
Yes.
Mrs. Steele?
Yes.
Mr. Babbitt?
Yes.
Mr. Boyd?
Yes. Motion carries six zero.
Second one.
And then the second one?
Second. I move for the approval of the resolution of the dispute with regard to a former employee. Second.
So a motion by Mr. Kuhn and a second by Mr. Babbitt.
Mr. Kuhn?
Yes.
Mrs. Reagan?
Yes.
Dr. Yurkovich?
Yes.
Mrs. Steele?
Yes.
Mr. Babbitt?
Yes.
Mr. Boyd? Yes. All right, moving on to fifteen dot zero one. I'm gonna need somebody to make a motion.
I have to do it. Um, do you still want ten minutes?
Uh, we've done.
How much time for the second one?
What is, what is?
We had ten minutes.
We have ten.
Oh, ten minutes, pretty good.
Okay. I move that the board go into executive session for the purpose of discussing personnel matters for non-elected personnel and that the board return to the regular meeting at nine ten in this room.
Second.
We have a motion by Mrs. Steele and a second by Dr. Yurkovich.
Mrs. Reagan?
Yes.
Dr. Yurkovich?
Yes.
Mrs. Steele?
Yes.
Mr. Boyd?
Yes.
Mr. Kuhn?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
I move that the board go into executive session for the purpose of discussing matters related to actions adversely or favorably affecting a person as a student and that the board return to the regular meeting at eight, nine, at nine twenty-seven P M in this room.
Okay.
A motion by Mr. Babbitt and a second by Mr. Q.
Mr. Babbitt?
Yes.
Mr. Boyd?
Yes.
Mr. Q? Mr. Q?
Yes.
Mrs. Reagan?
Yes.
Mrs. Steele?
Julie.
Mrs. Steele. Dr. Yerkes.
Yes. Sorry, yes.
Motion carries six zero.
Thank you.
Sorry, Julie. Sorry.
I move that the board go into executive session for the purpose of discussing matters relating to employer-employee negotiations, whether or not in consultation with the representative or representatives of the body or agency, and that the board return to the regular meeting at nine forty-five P M in this room.
Was that a second?
Yes.
Yeah, motion by Mrs. Steele and a second by Mrs. Reagan.
Mr. Q?
Yes.
Mrs. Reagan? Yes, Mr. Boyd?
Yes.
Mr. Babbitt?
Yes.
Mrs. Steele?
Yes.
Dr. Yerkes?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Dr. Yerkes, yeah. There we go, Dr. Yerkes.
Yes.
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 Do we have four votes?
We have four. Go ahead.
We are adjourned.